I don't think he knows it's a holiday.
He's actually at R thirty-two right now.
It's a, it's a Hallmark holiday is what I was told.
Hallmark holiday.
Well, don't forget, there was a big massacre.
Yeah, when's the best time to get up? I gotta call the Scotts home.
Roses and...
That's the best time. I think I got it.
When's he get Hallmark?
Um, after five.
Okay, just a couple of notes. You have to be on a couple libraries because I just want to straighten out.
Do you have these two be drawing your phone and see if this is true?
I think I'm gonna do that.
Just do some of the...
What's that?
She'll be faster with it than I am. I'm not.
Yeah.
I know one of you could...
It'll take me twenty minutes to get it.
They go to the Fort Edward.
And, and, and for that, and...
Yeah, my problem. Decorating here. We got our little... There's no little...
No, I've got it.
Funeral homeowners. So that's where we got our little...
It's gonna hurt, so it's cool.
No, that would have been cool, but yeah.
I don't know where to find it, honestly.
Okay, how are you?
I heard Grayson's taking that loss pretty tough.
He takes every loss tough. He can't lose.
He's like a...
Do you know who his father is?
No.
Can't beat the loser.
We ready to go?
I'm trying to find it, but honestly...
We did. He's usually on top early for... This campede here in show campede here, but I think Ella was...
Ella said she would try to make it. She wasn't gonna make the committee meeting, but she was gonna try to...
Yeah, she's, she's on her way to try to kind of... Okay. I will stop. I'm sure she won't mind. All right. Next comment, please join us for questions.
I put the new consistent flag and I say to remember to do the wrong thing.
All right, we're gonna hold the community comments for a minute. We're gonna go to recognition of successes and presentations prior to the community comments. So if you guys wanted to bring the recognition of success.
Sure, yeah, I can start with that. Thank you. Today was our kindergarten and they had their hundred day celebration. Leading up to the celebration, students had crafted projects made out of one hundred objects. These projects included one hundred pom-poms in the shape of a caterpillar, jellyfish with one hundred yard petals, fish pole with one hundred candy fish put in in jello, and a dress with one hundred rhinestones on it. They also had a writing project on what they have learned in the first one hundred days of school and what they will be doing when they turn one hundred years old. And today's big event was their traditional parade around the elementary school. So a big deal for our kindergarten classes and a nice start to the day. Our after-school enrichment program is up and running. This runs Tuesdays and Thursdays after school for students in grades three through six. Some of the programs offered include just dance. This class is exploring different types of dance with a focus on improving coordination, rhythm, and strength. Pin pals. Our students are brought to Broadway Lanes where they have fun bowling with their peers and learn the skills of the game. And beyond Monopoly, this course explores different board games to encourage strategic thinking, decision-making, and problem-solving. So some nice programs for our students after school that have been well-attended. And I will share additional information and some fun pictures with Mr. Beston, and he can share them with the board there. So I have some other things from Mrs. Smackles. So awesome. Great program. And lastly, we had one of our third graders in Mrs. Smackles' class publish in this week's issue of the Chronicle. Caleb Elliott answered the question, "What are you most looking forward to?" Caleb is an expert in all things firefighter. He can't wait to become a junior member of the Fort Edward Fire Department. And Caleb got his picture along with the teachers in the paper and in an article where he states, "You see, I've wanted to be a firefighter for a long time." Congratulations to Caleb.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
That's great.
It's also, is this something of a volunteer?
Um, yep, I have that. I'm gonna come back and run that.
Oh, you have the background?
The recital list report, but yes.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
If you wanted to recognize him now in the beginning of the meeting, just that the kids have one of these and stuff.
Sure, I can, I can do, yep, the bowling report. We have the students that were listed there. Do you want me to read them, students?
Please, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we had Andrew Fish, Connor Curry, Mark Humphries, Edward Lemell, Tori Anderson from Argyle, Dylan Perkins, Preston Guler, and Gabriel Glass. And I'll tell you a little bit about them. Our bowling team, led by Mr. Chase, had another successful season this year. They went undefeated in the Adronic League at forty-two and oh. They won the league championship. And just this past Friday, they took second place at the Class C Bowling Sectionals in Schenectady. The sectionals consist of six matches. After the fourth match, we were in first place. And we ended up only eighty pins shy of winning first place. So a great team and a great group of students and a coach, so congratulations.
That's awesome.
Certificate we sent to the kids.
Year after year, they're...
Yeah, they're around.
That recording?
It's supposed to be, yeah. And then...
It does not say recording up there.
Um, yep, the junior varsity. And we had the junior varsity with Jada Hottrid, um, Argyle, Bethany Carroll, Stella Mullen, and Mackenzie Keely, and those are folks coming up in the junior varsity, so...
It's a great program for the kids.
Great program, yep.
And we're also going to certificate to the student who was published. Yeah, absolutely.
Yep.
Awesome.
Mark, does that say it's recording?
Well, it's not.
Okay.
It doesn't record on Google anymore.
Oh, because it's the live stream.
It's live streaming to YouTube, hopefully. At least it said it was. That's why we were broadcasting.
And then it'll just automatically text it on.
Right, it will have the recording of the YouTube. But they took away, the, um, Google took away that recording function lately. They want you to pay a little bit more money, but it used to be free, isn't free anymore.
All right, cool. Next up are presentations, and I believe we have our prom committee that's gonna make a presentation through the board. You guys are introduced yourself.
Welcome, guys.
Hi, Sam. You're welcome.
Hi, my name's Anthony Torre. I am the class president of class of twenty twenty-two.
I'm Kayden Carter, and I'm the treasurer of our class twenty twenty-two.
I'm Chloe Smith. I'm the secretary of our class twenty twenty-two.
Um, today we're gonna be presenting what we're gonna be doing at our prom, what measures we're gonna take for everyone to be able to come to our prom, and what the schedule is gonna look like. It's gonna be at the nineteen twenty-five barn in Hudson Falls, New York. We'll be taking pictures at Juke Park in Hudson Falls, which will be followed by, at four P M., we'll meet at the school for sobriety and bag checks. Mr. Beston and Mr. Godfrey are gonna be contacting for police department for all that. Four thirty, we're gonna load onto the bus to go up to the nineteen twenty-five barn, and we'll be submitting the transportation request. Did we do that yet?
Keep on the toes, Anthony. Stay on.
At five P M., we're gonna take our coordination walk at the nineteen twenty-five barn. Parents, family, friends will be able to come up and take pictures of us going down the runway and all that. Our DJ will be set up there already, playing Time of Our Lives, our song, and we'll announce the participants. We will not be having a prom court, so no prom king or queen, anything like that. At five thirty, we're gonna have hors d'oeuvres and couples' pictures. At six, we're gonna have dinner. So probably, don't know what time that's gonna be exactly, but around there. Hors d'oeuvres and buffet dinner being catered by Ginny Rays. Some menu items we have are mini tacos, mozzarella sticks, pork loin, chicken Alfredo, and many other dishes. Then, then from seven to nine P M., we're gonna have our dancing and dessert slash candy bar. So we're gonna be giving everyone a insulated travel mug, even if they're from another school or they're just recently graduated. And we'll be having a little candy bar, so you'll be getting a travel mug. You'll bring it over to the candy bar, and you'll be able to scoop out some candy or put in candy wherever you want. And we're gonna get our decal on it by Kelly Riccadelli. And at nine thirty, we'll be coming back to Fort. We'll be gain change, and we'll then go to our after-prom party.
So for after-prom, we are not completely sure of what we're gonna do. It's gonna be one of three locations. It's either gonna be Sky Zone, Kingpins, or Broadway Lanes. I'm still not sure yet. This will be chaperoned by parent guarding volunteers, and each guest will need a signed paper stating who will be picking them up after the prom. And each of them will need to sign out after the prom with a parent or guardian. And our theme is gonna be Hollywood slash Grey Gatsby. And we're gonna have two to three chaperones besides the class advisors. Everyone in our class is able to get on the Google costume and see what's happening, see what we posted, just to know what's going on. But there's only one person who didn't respond to the thing we posted. We're trying to keep the cost of the prom tickets low, twenty-five to thirty-five dollars. If someone felt they couldn't attend, we would cover it for them, so they'd be able to go. Once tickets have been purchased, they can't be refunded, so that's that. Each student will be allowed to bring a guest. If bringing more than one guest, one may be from outside the senior class and one from within the senior class. Guests from outside the district must have required paperwork filled out by other school districts and Mr. Godfrey himself. Guests who have already graduated must graduate from the F E. School District within the last year.
I gotta tell you guys, it's a great outline, and you normally don't get concept pictures with prom.
Yeah. That's nice.
I dig that. It looks like it's gonna be fun.
Are we going to day four to decorate?
Are we going day four or day oh?
Day, day four, day oh.
I have a question.
To decorate, or are you guys going to day four?
First one, I think we're gonna be after school. After school, we don't need that any time off from school.
Yeah, and if there are any of your classmates that are having a hard time coming up with a ticket, Chris, I'm sure there's a bunch of them to help out.
Yeah.
You can always come and talk with Mr. Godfrey, Mr. Beston, and the board to help out as much.
Do you also have a major fundraiser planned, which is getting some stuff up into New York? You wanna share that?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, our yearly Krispy Kreme fundraiser, it's gonna be around eighth, March, April.
We're gonna be selling, um, March seventeenth through, I think, March thirtieth. And our order has to be put in a week before we go pick them up. So I think we put the order on April first, and we pick them up and come out to April eighth. And then they'll be distributed either, depending on weather, out back or out front here from the lobby, um, April eighth.
That's a great drive-up.
Krispy Kreme though.
Oh, cool.
So last year we sold three hundred and eighty dozen. We're hoping to sell more.
Four hundred.
Four hundred is our goal this year.
Holy smokes, that's a lot of...
That's a lot.
Yeah. It is.
That's just on our street, or...
You guys have any other questions for us? No?
Are you excited?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Guys, it's nice, it's nice that there's only one senior that didn't respond so far, so we want, have you, has someone spoken to that one senior to see what's... It's nice to have, it's nice to have everybody there. That's all, it's a good thing.
Our class president was supposed to speak to him. I don't know about that.
I know. He's a little reluctant.
Mark, I haven't been able to talk to him.
That's all right, just as long as you have the intention of doing that, so you'll say it before, so you'll get things straightened out.
Yeah.
Happy belated birthday, Kayden.
Thank you.
We appreciate you guys coming, if I was not...
Yes, thank you very much.
Nice itinerary, nice job.
Very nice job, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're very quiet, I'm gonna change.
Bye, guys. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
We're not sticking around for the best. They're gonna kill me at the conference. Thank you, Mrs. Thorpe, for...
He didn't even really ask. That's so nice.
I'm the secretary.
A candy bar, that sounds really fun.
Yes.
So there's no community comments thus far. We'll move on. Finance committee met this evening. You know, wanna sum that up for the board?
You got notes, Tom?
Okay, yep, you got notes.
Okay, so we reviewed cash flow reports. We had both from December and January. And cash flow is still looking good. The one report that is very nice to look at is with regards to the fiscal stress score, which includes, um, information from two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, and two thousand twenty-one. And we have gone from a very bad score to a really good score. There has been a significant improvement since two thousand and nineteen, where we were previously in significant fiscal stress. In two thousand and twenty, we then improved to susceptible fiscal stress. And now in two thousand twenty-one, we have no designation, which is very impressive and considered significant improvement. And that now with that, we are doing very well, which helps us especially with regards to the...
Bonding, and if anybody better rates.
So that was very nice to see. We did review the cafeteria profit and loss statement, and started reviewing some other pieces with regards to, um, to the budget. I don't know, let's see.
No, just to primarily look at the budget, where we, where we stand, what do we need, where do we have to go, what's the funds look like, what's the state aid look like? So just a really early projection of what our budget's gonna be.
And we're going to be doing another budget session, I guess it would be called?
Workshop.
Workshop coming up. It's looking like it'll be the twenty-second for that. The thing that always happens this time of year though is there's so many things that are still, still waiting on. You're waiting on both these rates, information to come. You're waiting on the, um, the state aid information to come. So it's like you're building the plane while you're flying it, but you don't even have all the parts to your plane.
Legislative budget.
Legislative budget, like, so there's all these pieces that are listed under the pending. But that's, that's where we're at.
Um, there's also, you'll find later on in the agenda that we'll be quoting to approve a letter of intent for a sixty-six passenger bus these. It's been identified that we do the, the new bus, the one we have is just not satisfactory. Without that, we'll probably be limited on field trips and things like that next year. Obviously, it's gotta be approved by the public come budget time, but we can approve a letter of intent, because there is one available.
Right, there's, there's one in Tulsa, Oklahoma, that's just off factory line. By our letter of intent, it pretty much locks it down for us. So it doesn't mean we're buying it, it just means we've, you know, we've claimed it. They know that come May, the date of May, if we pass our budget, at that point, we could do all the other stuff that we need to do, and the bus would be here in July.
Okay.
So that you could start school. If you don't do the letter of intent, they're giving it to anyone else who does, and we would have to wait for them to come off the production line. And at that point, you know, we may not see that bus till November, December. So in New York State, a lot of schools will do a letter of intent to guarantee that they have that bus return over.
And that goes on as a separate...
Proposition.
Proposition with the budget.
Exactly.
The only other committee meeting I see that has to be had soon is, uh, policy.
Policy committee, yep.
So we need to set dates, read routes, and dates more.
So...
Myself and Ella were at the last one.
Right. And I think Krispy Kreme.
I don't remember who else was on it.
Ella, I am not.
So how do you think anyone wants to do it, the week of the rotation?
I would prefer not to.
Yeah. So we're looking at some date after eight, up to March first. And March first might be taken, really.
Policy, Joe, Ella, Tom, myself, Jo, Susan, all for that.
So we wanna meet somewhere between the first week, which is the first through the third. First, I think it's gonna be both. And then you have the seventh, eighth, ninth, and tenth. And you have the second and the third. Second is actually one day of fifteen.
What's, what's the best day that week for everyone?
Because it'll have the seventh, the seventh...
The seventh is good, the eighth is good, the ninth is good. Tenth is good.
Seventh.
Yeah, I prefer a Monday or Tuesday.
Monday? I'm good for Monday.
Mark it.
Yep, all right, so let's do, uh...
At what time?
It's gotta be six, I don't know, maybe late.
Policy committee.
Reese, seven, same two?
Yeah.
That's sixteen.
All right, superintendent's report.
So thanks, John. Nice job with all the recognitions. See, we'll be a lot of talking through the mask here. One of the other main issues that we've been addressing here still is COVID. It's not gone. Hopefully, it's going away. For fifty, we, we have a ton of test kits here now. At first, they came in a dribble, and now they've come in a wave. So what we're basically planning to do is issue a test kit to every child on Friday. We'll probably have a letter going out tomorrow, via backpack mail, mobile call, dojo, our website. Let your parents know that each kid will be given a sealed two-test kit package to bring home on Friday. What we're gonna be hoping people could do is test their child on Sunday. Just to, you know, in case we have to provide the data to the state of the number of kids that are negative. I'm sure, you know, kids don't have conditions, and they're gonna probably be negative. And then Monday, we'll start, you know, the after-break, hopefully with a bunch of healthy kids. As always, if you're symptomatic, stay home and then get tested or see the doctor, and hopefully it's something else. The other thing that we're trying to get ready for is the mask mandate. The, there is belief that somewhere down the road, and we're hoping, you know, in some way sooner or later, that the mask mandate's gonna be changed from a mandate to choice. The issue there, though, is, you know, everyone's like quick on thinking, unless you do something, everything's over. But there's always second and third level effects to almost everything that is done. So we, we, you know, we're in a group and we're studying, what's the second level effects of removing masks? Well, quarantine is not going away. So quarantine's not going away, what does that mean for the children without the mask? So basically, we haven't had to identify a child in the school because they've been masked and three feet away, or for the period of time that they are unmasked in the cafeteria, we unfortunately had to use the gym, and they're six feet apart when they're unmasked for that period of time. So the minute the children are now unmasked and under six feet, they are gonna fall under the quarantine protocols. So, that being said, you have two kinds of protocols. Protocols for kids who are, like in sports, if they treat it as if you weren't wearing a mask. So if you're vaccinated or vaccinated and boosted, you're good to go, as long as you're asymptomatic, and we can give you a test to stay kid, which isn't a problem, because we have our own lab license now. We can do the ECLRS, we can enter all the information into the state. The problem that people aren't foreseeing is you have an unvaccinated child who was without their mask within three feet. Boom, that child is gonna be the subject of quarantine after it's contact traced here in the school, using those resources again. And that child, right now, looks like they'll be out for at least five days, and then gets to come back, you know, under the test to stay, wear the mask, and everything else. So those are the second and third level effects that nobody's starting to address or, or deal with. For our district, because we don't bus, we don't fall under what some of the other schools are gonna fall under, because under busing, the governor has no say on masks on the bus. The buses are a public transportation convenience following the National Transportation Safety Board. They're no, no different than the airlines, Amtrak, and, and Greyhound. So they still make sure that our kids are wearing masks. So you got a mask on the bus, you got a choice off the bus, and then you gotta worry about the quarantine. So then you're gonna have a situation where, hey, kid A is vaccinated, and we don't even know how the kids are vaccinated, because we don't collect that data. But the minute your child's in contact, it will have to reach out to you, find out if you're vaccinated, then determine where you fall on the algorithm chart and say, okay, you could come in, but you're doing test to stay, meaning we're gonna test you today, we're gonna test you two days from now, and by Friday, if you get sick, you're good to go. You don't fight on day five. And then if you're a kid that's not vaccinated and you're unmasked and within that contact zone, unfortunately, you gotta call your mom in your home for at least five. So all that stuff comes back. So where everyone's getting excited, mask or off, in a way, I sometimes see it as maybe it's another way to tell people who are unvaccinated, guess what? You better get vaccinated, or you're gonna be out for five. So I'm wondering if that's sort of like an ulterior motive for some, for a certain group of why they wanna let the mask go. So we just all need to be careful for what we wish for, and then think about where we're gonna be on those second and third level effects. I'd love to see the mask off. We had a hundred, the one hundred day celebration today. I think it's terrible to have that picture that we have all those little kids with their masks on. It's, it, you know, it's not good, but we have to be careful what they're gonna expect to do without the mask.
What are the consequences, if there are any, of the school just saying, going against the state's guidance, unmasking the kids?
State aid, penalties, removal of the school board.
Stop right after state aid.
John and myself.
That's it?
Well, that, yeah, that's the easy one. We're good. We go back to retirement.
So, yeah, I just wanted to point out the fact that, you know, we lose state aid, so if they're pushing for the mask to come off, they want to pay the difference, that's fine.
And also a financial penalty, especially if we're doing it like, like straight out in protest, you know?
Has she set a time, has the governor set a timeline?
No, we, we thought we were gonna hear something this week. We were hoping to hear about this so-called... She's already indicated she wants all these tests going out by Friday. She's already indicated she wants the kids to take tests before they come back from February break. So we've been expecting, since she said that, to get some directive from her of what she wants. So now we're starting to do this on our own. Send the kids home. First of all, when those kids go home, a kid doesn't bring it back, it's not mandatory. I don't, you know, we're sending a kid home, if the parents wanna use it on the dog for, like, ad... That's not my, my business. So it's up to a family if they actually are gonna use these tests. And then if those people wanna share that they're, they tested their kids and they were negative, so we have some data to give the governor, that's great. And people wanna say, it's none of your business, but my kid's healthy, he's asymptomatic, that's great too. They can send that to us, and we'll just keep the data. And when the state says, send us the data, because chances are, don't ask for it on Friday at six o'clock at night after everybody left for the April break, or I mean the February break, we'll at least have something to go off of and say, okay, here's whatever's data, have a good time, and we'll keep driving on with the things that we need to do for our kids.
Curious, because when she had those first two days of controversy, remember she made a decision, then took it back the next day, so people wouldn't know. So she left March first as a tentative day that she was going to make the decision.
And, and last week, our mask mandate in the schools ran out, and something else ran out. She reextended it for another ninety days. So she did that last week. So when the mask, I figure when the weather gets better, windows could be open, and it's not gonna cause a spike and everything else. But I think right now, while we're still in cold and flu season, we're indoors, windows are closed, heat is on, chances are, we're not gonna see it in New York for a little bit, probably April break.
Did we end up getting, I think you may have told us this last month, um, the lab license?
We got our lab license. We've done our own testing in-house.
Okay.
I'm the medical director, report all that data, scriptbook, so I'm assistant doctor, I'm the medical director.
Did she say close the school?
Is there a plan to change any, any cafeteria plan type, like, is it going to stay the, the large gym for the rest of the year?
Well, well, when they reduce that requirement for the six-foot when unmasked, or if they bring it down to three feet while unmasked, we're gonna make that move. But right now, that's, that's... But right now, that's, that's protected dozens and dozens of kids each week.
Yeah, absolutely, I understand the, the reasoning.
How many were we losing each week back when we had the place open in September or October?
Or some time ahead when it was four or five, everybody who was in range, because we couldn't get far enough away from each other.
Yeah, so once we would get a call that, you know, Johnny, Johnny Doe has it, we would have to go to the camera, see where he sat for lunch for three days, to look at everybody who sat around him for those three prior days. And those kids all needed to be quarantined. Now fortunately, we had assigned seats, so usually whoever was with him on day one, if things weren't right, was with him for day two or day three. If they were middle school kids, chances are they didn't go all that right, they, we found it was one or two outliers that moved into those, that zone. And we ended up, you know, having to put out more, but we were losing four to six kids, or if we were lucky, a kid was on the end of the table. But basically, four to six kids every time another kid, uh, became positive. Once we moved to the gym, nothing. So our contact, contact tracing in school, other than athletic teams, or the occasional bus that was going to, let's say, um, Prospect School, was zero. So we didn't lose kids from preschool, um, exchanges.
I mean, that's an impact on the parents as well, you know.
Looked lost to work.
Lost to work.
Finding daycare.
Daycare, you know, switching days off. Alright, can I ask a question? Is it, is it six feet or now, or is it, is it three feet and six feet is the idea?
Three feet with a mask, as long as you're masked, three feet. When you're unmasked is six feet.
I just wanted to, I got, we got a memo that the state employees were now three feet last week.
Yeah, three feet with a mask, and they can, and you're good to go. And then if you're at six feet and you're unmasked, you're, um, you're safe, and, you know, the kids are in the cafeteria for thirty, forty minutes, you know, thirty minutes. So with that time, there's also another requirement that's called the fifteen minute requirement, that if within fifteen minutes of the day, if your time adds up, unmasking anybody, that becomes another thing. But because we mask all the time, we're good to go on that. So it's, it's kept a lot of kids in school, kept a lot of parents at work. And that's, you know, and the most important thing that we want is we want the kids in school. So that's the unfortunate part, we haven't lost a day of instruction due to COVID. We have, and fortunately for our employees, the same thing, we have had a mass outage of employees that caused us to have to go remote. So we're, you know, we're pretty happy about that, and we don't wanna end up that way, if we could avoid it. But like I said, they're gonna have to do some protocol changes if they remove the mask, otherwise we're just gonna be walking into September plus.
Nobody wants that.
The budget, we, we, you know, recorded in the finance report, the budget is another big focus that we've been working on. And we're still trying to put together finer points on the budget, we're gonna have a workshop on the twenty-second. By then, we should have some more fine tuning on some of our special ed information. We should have some more fine tuning on what's going on at the BOSEs, where we get aid and where we have some costs. We're also looking at what the projections are, you know, nationally with the cost of energy, because that's, that hurts us too. Fortunately for the cost of food, our food service is awfully funded by the federal government and run through BOSEs. So it's not like in other schools where we'd have to be considering raising prices, or, or, you know, what could we do to bring the budget down, and in those areas, we're, we're very lucky. So the budget, like I said, it's still a moving target, but we're fuck, you know, we're getting closer and closer to that target. Negotiations, just so you know, we've been requested to go into negotiations with both the FETA and the staff association before that. The, the FETA already threw out a date, they're hoping we can do our first meeting with them on April first. So I'm gonna have to have Toby reach out to the people that are on the committee. Now, this is one thing I gotta ask you, if we're in negotiations with both groups, and we have a superintendent search, instead of having one negotiating committee, is there, is there, you, you, we don't need to do a this meeting, but you may wanna consider moving to two negotiating teams. Alright, so you may wanna have the president on one, the vice president on the other, and then grab some more colleagues to be at either the FEDA meeting and another group at the staff meeting. I mean, I'll be at all of them, but just, you know, you guys are volunteers and your time is valuable and, you know, it shouldn't be a full-time job in the evening, which is what it might look like.
Um, yeah, alright, we'll discuss that, sure.
That's a seven dozen needs to be made.
The first negotiation gonna be in the first.
April first with FEDA, if, if we have a team ready to go. So what, Toby's gonna do is she'll, she'll get the names together, who's on the committee, we'll send out a quick email to start that one. And then like I said, if, if, after that first meeting, you, you see how it's gonna be maybe this long commitment, and knowing that we'll have, we also have that other group, you may wanna come back here for the next meeting or whatever, and say, hey, listen, we need to rally, you know, get the reserves in here and, and broaden the base.
Yeah, we'll see how it goes.
Superintendent search is the other big either, we gotta kind of play, next step, community advisory committees. Um, Toby's working hard, getting names, getting lists. She's working with Jackie White over at the other BOSE's office, you know, make sure they're in tune, and with Tony Mueller. And their first meeting for these advisory committees will be two teams, but they'll be meeting on the fifteenth. And at that point, they'll be learning to go over the, um, the questions and what the different roles are, and they'll, and they'll, they'll pick like, you know, a chief person in their negotiating team. The board is not, does not need to be at the meeting of the fifteenth or the sixteenth. The sixteenth is an all-day session, there is no evening. Both advisory teams will be here pretty much from like nine to three, meeting with the candidates, going through a different rotation, as set up at BOSEs. By BOSEs, um, Toby and I will do everything we can to, to support BOSEs as well as the candidates, give them a great tour of the building, meet people, show them the best side of Fort Edward. The, um, we're gonna, we're gonna take a road tour, Toby's gonna show us the best side of Fort Edward.
Gotta start at Toby's house.
Uh, March seventeenth, the evening of, and that's where I gotta talk to Tony a little bit more, the evening of March seventeenth is where we all have the, the board needs to come back and meet with the representatives or with those teams to go over their impressions of the, the candidates that they've met. And it's St. Patrick's Day, so it should be, and a Friday, so it's gonna be a slow start to the weekend and St. Patrick's Day. But you know, you all signed up for it, so congratulations.
At some point, we did agree to that, none of us processed that it was.
Yeah.
I'm ahead of that meeting.
That's it? A great report by the proud committee, I support it.
Yeah, it was very.
No, it's a Thursday.
Is it Thursday?
A Thursday.
Okay. Well, usually if you wanna.
Yeah, no.
I need to mark them out. Treasurer's report, um, we discussed that already, uh, it's gonna be on the twenty-second. The most important thing to put to your brain is at that meeting, sometime around there, we've gotta give Charlene guidance on the tax gap. Um, she needs this, submit that by March first, so gather the information that you can from the reports we have on there, and be prepared to make that decision on that evening.
And Mark, you're gonna be sure that she gets us the reports that she put up on the screen today that we didn't have yet? There's two or three I'm gonna add, she's up there?
You up there?
She's up there. She can hear us, or, she can't talk.
She'll get, she says she's gonna get this.
What, what?
There you are.
So they're just asking to make sure that the reports that you discussed today, that we get copies over to them.
Right.
Right, and I can me, I can email them that, so they have everything we can email them.
It's all here on the files.
Okay.
Okay, uh, this guy?
Yep. Some more, thank you. I'm proud to announce, this year's valedictorian and salutatorian for the class of twenty twenty-two. This year's valedictorian is Bryce Tyler, and our salutatorian is Miranda Sardina. This is an extraordinary honor, and it speaks highly of our students' aptitude and achievements. These two students have the privilege of giving a speech at our graduation ceremony in June, and I wanted to acknowledge them and let them know that we are proud of their accomplishments. It's well done.
And a lot of crap time to prepare that speech.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. Um, and just an update for our spring sports, our baseball and softball signups have started. Also, our open gym for softball was today, and baseball is, it will be tomorrow.
Alright, building grounds reports, not in a packet, but I think.
Uh, he mailed it.
He sent an email, didn't he?
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was in a packet.
Alright, any questions on Alan?
Yeah, I've got a lot on the box though.
Yeah, the box, yeah, the boxes.
Alright, so we talked about superintendent search, next thing on discussion items is budget planning update, which we've always talked about that as well, right? Sports merger football.
So right now, we recommend it to you as a sport, we, we tried to go eight-man football, that was our dream. Then we have a four-ever team, they're playing sports, they play all their games out there. But fortunately, we were one team shy of forming a league in, in section two. And the sad part was there was a lot of teams that don't have the capacity for eleven-man football, who said, we're gonna try for eleven-man football, but we'll let you know in July.
Who is the whole team?
There was multiple whole halves, mostly closer to all of them. So because of that, we're gonna go forward with our merger with an aderent partner, Corinth. You guys partnered with them in a few years back, and it's, it's an even partnership. So just, so what that means is a week we go there, a week they come here, we split their games. The only caveat is if one of our teams, let's say we end up with twenty people and they only end up with four, then basically everything happens here. If they end up with twenty-something people and we only end up with four, it happens over there. Right now, our signups look like fourteen to sixteen kids, so it looks like a true partnership.
Now, they, most kids aware that there is a merger? They're, they're gonna be playing with Corinth?
They were, we, they were told those were some of the options, I don't think they know yet, because that's all we have right now. So the, so the deal there is, by going with this aderent team, and maybe some of these other schools that claimed that they were gonna have their eleven-man team, and they forfeit X amount of games, because they're probably gonna go for a merger, hopefully next year they'll be willing to jump to eight-man, so maybe eight-man's just really just one year away. We also have a good number of kids that we believe are coming up to our modified program from the sixth grade. You gotta remember, we've lost two years of recruiting kids in seventeen eighth grade because of COVID. And once kids unfortunately found other things to do, instead of having that camaraderie and coming and doing things in school, it's hard to grasp when we're pulling back in, but we're trying. But the good part is that those sixth graders are really hungry to play modified, so we have a legitimate modified team, we have numbers nine to twelve to have a legitimate partnership with Corinth.
So fourteen to sixteen kids is nine to twelve?
That's what we're looking at.
And Corinth is still with Luzern?
I was gonna say, so Corinth and Luzern.
Luzern's giving like two or three bodies. They're not, anything, they're just giving them that opportunity. So, so Beecher, when I spoke with him, basically, he says only has two or three kids, they're just gonna go up the road to Corinth, and everything falls under Fort Edward and everything else.
So we're not gonna be doing any busing to like Hadley and?
No, no, nothing's that heavy.
It's just everything is Corinth and Fort Edward?
Everything's between Corinth and, and Fort Edward.
Now, when, when would you plan on having, you know, a meeting or an informational meeting with the kids that, that have signed up already?
Well, once we, once we have this done, Lominda and Jeff and Jeff will have to get together and start getting. But the other thing is also motivating even more kids to sign up.
Well, that's where I'm heading, is Edward, Mel and, and Zach and Anthony and, and Chris's kid until they transferred over, I believe they all had a good experience at Southwoods Falls. If you could include, especially Anthony and Edward who played at varsity level, have them, ask them to talk to these kids about what it's like to play in a merge, you know, a, a bigger merge team.
Well, they also, if I can add, they also played with Corinth.
Yes.
And they loved being merged with Corinth, they really did, it was, they loved those coaches and those kids they played with. So it would be a good idea, and Ashton Solomon, he played with them as well, um, maybe to have them.
Let the older kids talk to these kids and, and, you know, because I'm sure that some of them, like they had before, uh, had some fears about it. You know, am I gonna get to play, am I gonna see the field? Well, look, these kids played almost every now, Anthony was, you know, on the all-star team, so, you know, hopefully that carries some weight.
And that was why we wanted to merge with the aderent.
And I was saying, having a merger is different than, than just taking over our, our kids, which is similar to what happened this year.
And that's why Corinth, because they're merged.
Inter-similar size.
They're in the same boat as us using nine to twelve, and we're also playing other aderent schools that are similar to us too, where our sizes, you know, sizes.
It's gonna match up a little better.
And how many kids will be seniors and juniors and sophomores spread among.
I'd like to see more, more kids, like you said, more kids sign up, and that just gives us more power moving into the following years, so.
How many, do you, do you know the numbers that Corinth has?
Corinth has about sixteen to eighteen kids too, we're, we're about the same. The other thing is at this point, we're looking at, we, we asked about the Warhawks. I guess when they were the Warhawks, the kids brought their own jerseys, is what I was told. A number of them brought their own jerseys, got their names on their back. So there isn't a stack of Warhawk jerseys available to us.
Would they still be the Warhawks even though they're with Luzern too?
So we're still Mountaineers?
So, and what Luzern is still.
Luzern's not an equal triple partner, they're, they're Corinth, they're two different guys, it's really the merger for the two teams.
But what ended up happening is they had purchased gear before, until Lake George Bounce signed them, they purchased a bunch of uniforms for the Mountaineers, and they're unused. So they say.
So you've equipment sitting with this decal?
And I asked Mark Strider, I said, what do you need from us? He said, we're good, we got the numbers, we got enough for everybody.
Would it be a JV and a varsity program or just varsity?
I think it's gonna be just varsity, but looking at our aderent team, here's what ends up happening. Your, your ninth graders and some of your tenth graders that didn't play, they, they're, usually the coaches will try to schedule a merger, not, not a merger, a scrimmage, like on a Monday or a Tuesday, for those kids that didn't get much action, so that you could get them into some contact and not lose them, you don't want them to leave because they're bored, they're not playing. But on the other side of the coin, you don't wanna put them on the field to get covered.
Sure, yeah.
You know, dissuaded from ever stepping on the field again, let's just say. So, you know, and, and I, I know our coaches, and I, and I really know the, the two Corinth coaches, they're, they're good coaches.
They're very good.
Yeah, it was a good working relationship, I think.
Brian Raw and, and, and Chris Dooty are two very experienced, good coaches.
Very good guys.
They're gonna want kids to be successful, and that's what it's all about. So it's matching the kids up size-wise, age-wise, talent-wise, and then making sure that we don't lose kids out of boredom or out of being used as a life practice, don't we? I mean, that's just not done these days, it shouldn't have ever been.
Awesome, uh, next discussion item is composition of the school board.
Can, can we just back up, I would like to do a couple comments about superintendent search. I know that Mark had touched on superintendent search, but can I just make a few comments back on the number one discussion item? Um, just so that it's in the minutes and whatnot, because we have done quite a bit of work as a board since our last meeting with regards to superintendent search. Um, we had ten total applicants, which, um, I personally was very pleased with that number, not knowing really what the pool was going to look like for that. Um, so we have ten total, which we narrowed to four candidates. And, um, last week, we were here on Tuesday evening to interview two. And then on Thursday evening, we interviewed another two, and we have narrowed to three candidates at this point, um, which is what will head forward for the advisory committees. Um, and just generally speaking, I've been pleased with the process and pleased with, um, the experience. And Christine and I both said it's nice to see people who have passion in education. Uh, we're in the, the grind, um, it's daunting, and people are coming in with a lot of energy and a lot of positivity, and, um, it's just, it's been nice to actually be a part of that, so. So I'm looking forward to these next steps, because like I've said, it's my first time going through a superintendent search, and regardless of the outcome, the process has been really good.
Thorough.
Very thorough.
It's a lot to do with both, Tony does a great job, James does a great job.
I'd say that they have been unbelievably helpful, I think, with, you know, preparing things and helping with everything.
But they do stay in the battery.
Yes, yes, absolutely, like preparing like, here is a paper.
So thank you, I just wanted to shift back to that for you. Thank you.
Composition of the school board.
So I didn't get any information back on, on the total process of it, but we still got time for the next meeting, and I'll get information from Chris Lee Chantin, which is it. And by the total process, I mean how if you were to reduce two seats or four seats, how you have to work it through a cycle. So I've given her who everybody is and when their three-year terms end.
Five, five years.
Five-year terms. So, so basically, she's looking at that, and at that point, what she looks at is the public has to vote. It's not your vote, the only thing you get to vote on is to put it on the agenda along with the budget vote, the board members running, the, the bus, the bus. And the public needs to vote on it, and it's a simple one vote, fifty percent or more, that says, okay, we would like to reduce our Board of Education to seven seats or to five seats. Do you need to get the information out, why? So people know that, you know, no one's pulling a fast fire anymore. And then you also have to put the information out, like, like for example, we have a board election coming up. We have three seats that are run, if you have everybody running for those seats, you can't say, oh, by the way, you're running for a seat that's gonna be vacated if, if this goes through. So it wouldn't take effect for another year to two years to two years before you finally get to where you are. In addition, you also have to change your cycle, so, so we would have to recommend that in a subsequent year, not this year, because everything's the way it is, that if you are running for an election, you might be running for a one-year seat to get onto a new cycle. You might be running for a three-year seat, whatever, so that you can start balancing your board out. So it's, it's a multi-year process, and like I said, I need to get the nuts and bolts from Chris Lee Chantin on where it would be. So she's probably gonna do a scenario of seven seats or five seats. Now, I know it's hard, because I know that, that boards of education, nobody's like chomping at the bit to get on them, and you, you know, filling those nine seats every term gets a little harder and harder. But you know what, if you got a five-person board, a seven-person board, you get to see that it's almost just as hard sometimes. So it's, you know, it's not your, your total answer, but it's something that I'll try to get you the information so that you guys at the next board meeting could determine, hey, this is something we want to put before the public on the main vote, and then we'll have to make sure that as we do that, we have all the right information to put in that budget newsletter so the public knows what is going on, as well as putting it out on our webpage and any other way that we can reach out to the public. Because it's mostly not the school public that we gotta reach out to, it's the community public that, you know, doesn't know what's going on in here sometimes, and we don't want them to ever have the feeling that someone's trying to pull something out, because that is not good. So we gotta figure out how we're gonna do all the outreach and education for those people who aren't in the know, so they don't, they don't think something else is going on.
We may have time to nail this, to start the process as soon as we're finished.
So thank you for the info, because I was the one who had requested info with regards to requirements for the number of board members. For some, a couple of reasons, I felt that a nine-member board in a district of our size just does seem like a large number of board members. But also, in looking historically, there has been difficulty filling Board of Education seats. So it was something that I heard a couple of people mention at different times, and I said, you know, I don't know what the process is, and so I had reached out to Mark to ask, I don't know whether I feel it's a good idea or not, just something that I think is good for us to chat about, have a discussion about. I did go on all the Washington County District webpages and just to see, because I was curious as to how many members they had on, in the other area districts. There's one that has a three-member board, five that have a five-member, one that has a seven-member, and four that have a nine-member. So there are actually, I, I thought we were one of the only ones with nine, but there are four of us just in Washington County, but five seemed is the one that has, has the most, which I just thought was interesting.
Well, I think one thing that, you know, you need to look at the smaller number of board members is gonna require.
Does it correlate to the size of the district, I'm curious.
Oh, I mean, attendance to the board meetings is gonna be essential with a smaller number of board members.
Especially when you have some of those majorities.
Yeah. So you know, you need to have enough people to think, well, you need to, you know, so that's something to, to think about when we're taking a look at the size of the board, it's not just the numbers, it's the logistics of it.
Well, the other thing is too, a problem that we talked about this evening, you've got so many negotiations going on at one time, but if you have five people on the board, then you're lucky if you get all five.
Right.
You gotta do, you know, big meetings a week or whatever.
You know, it is not fair to, you know, it's not fair to, you know, the people who show up, it's not fair to the negotiating parties at times, so, you know, we do have to think about that end of it.
No doubt, yeah, so it's all things to consider, people have chosen Congress. But you're right, but the major point I think would have brought you to the decision is, was it two years ago?
I guess.
We had three seats open and a one-year, and everyone that got on the board that year was already been.
Right, right, and I don't remember how long it was.
It's tough sometimes, but there seems to be a lot of interest in the community.
When do people have to, if people are going to run for the board, when do they pick up petitions? When do they?
It's thirty, right.
It's in April. April, oh.
So it's the Monday, or it's the Tuesday after, after.
That's when they have to hand them in by?
Yeah, right after Easter.
Right around the.
So we'll know also, you know, how much interest there is around that time as well?
Yeah, so it'll be good.
Because we all have three seats open.
And then, just the process for every one out there, so you gotta get twenty-five signatures.
Do we still have? We did last year, we did last year, yeah.
It should still be the same, but the, and writing votes don't do anything, but, you know, but if you wanna be on the docket, you have to have twenty-five signatures. Cool.
Thank you.
All right, it's an agenda. Can I have approval of A through D?
Do you need to add the other two more names?
Yeah, we, we got the two meetings that we met to.
Yeah, these two.
Can I ask? Because that doesn't have to be added to the. Plans for February twenty-two and January twenty-two, and approval of treasurer's report for December twenty-one and January twenty-two.
All right, just so I'm clear, B is going to include January, and C is going to include January?
Correct.
Okay, with that modification. You guys are all good, can I get a motion for A through D?
We'll make that.
John and Amanda, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good, it's five, right? All right, move to action items, I need the motion to approve the CDSC, CPSC recommendations as included in the board packets. Any motion? Christina? Amanda? Any discussion? All in favor? Most to approve the contract for health services provided to children that reside in Fort Edward and attend Saratoga Spring City Schools, any motion? Amanda and Christina? Any discussion? All in favor? This is, this is number C, we need the most to approve letter of intent for sixty-six passenger buses. Yes, still has to be voted on, but you can put the letter of intent in there. John? Christina? Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, most to appoint Jessica Smako as after-school teacher for session one in Richmond, grades three through four, board game club, at a rate of pay per the CRSA Act, ESSER, two grants. James and Christina? Any discussion? Thank you, Ms. Smako. All in favor? Most to appoint Sherri Janir as after-school instructor for session one in Richmond, grades three to four, winter creative crafts and more, at a rate of pay of CRSA Act, ESSER, two grants. Christina? James? Thank you, Ms. Janir. All in favor? Most to appoint, appoint Madeline Godfrey as after-school teacher for session one in Richmond, grades three to four, just dance and yoga, at a rate of pay per CRSA Act, ESSER, two grants. Did I say S?
S, you have to.
Christina? Any discussion? All in favor?
Who was the, who was first and second?
I think Amanda got first and then I was second.
He's also.
Yeah, Miller's having a blast.
Thank you, Madeline. Most to approve, appoint Ashley Godfrey as after-school instructor for session one in Richmond, grades three to four, Reader's Theater, at a rate per CRSA Act, an ESSER two grant. Christina? John? Any discussion? Thank you, Ash, thank you, Madeline.
No, that's Ashley, for that one.
Sorry, you're right. All in favor? Motion to appoint Anne Marie Boudo as after-school teacher for session one in Richmond, grades five through six, board game club, at a rate of pay per CRSA Act, ESSER, two grants. Christina and James? Thank you, Anne Marie. All in favor? Most to appoint Christina Bump as after-school teacher for session one in Richmond, grades five to six, the Bob Ross Experience. At a rate of pay per CRSA Act, ESSER, two grants.
I love it.
James, Christina? Any discussion? Thank you, Ms. Bump. All in favor? Most to appoint Samantha Markham as after-school teacher for session one in Richmond, grades five through six, Lego Mania, at a rate of pay per CRSA Act, ESSER, two grants. Christina? Amanda? Any discussion? Thank you, Samantha, all in favor? Most to appoint Mary Ann Stark as after-school teacher for session one in Richmond, grades five through six, Intro to Theater, at a rate of pay per CRSA Act, ESSER, two grant. Amanda, Christina? Any discussion? Thank you, Ms. Stark. All in favor? Most to appoint Nelson Chase as after-school teacher for session one in Richmond, grades three to six, bowling, at a rate of pay per CRSA Act, ESSER, two grants. Christina? Amanda? Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Mr. Chase. Good. Most to appoint Susan, Susan Holsh, is that correct? As after-school teacher assistant for Richmond classes, at rate of pay per CRSA Act, ESSER, two grant. Amanda?
Any else?
We're talking on the backboard, okay? Any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holsh. All in favor? Most to approve a contract between Ford Edward U F S D and Melissa McFarlane, consultant psychologist, effective February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Christina? And Amanda? Any discussion?
I believe this is, my guess is Barb, I think, because we had approved a very similar, if not necessarily identical, as Barb. My guess is she's just needing help to keep up.
Barb, we're catching up, and Barb, you know, Melissa coming out of, you know, she, she's willing to work part-time under the same contract as Barb, with all the same things, so, instead of Barb going out and doing these, Melissa will, at the same rate.
Same number of evals, just a different person that will do it.
It just depends.
All in favor?
Just so you know, she's already done with becoming a member of the board. She had two day jobs. Where's the letter?
Is that okay?
Hold on, where's the letter?
So.
Add over, yeah.
Yeah, someone did, we're talking about L, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
We're talking about.
Are you talking about L? It's okay, it's done.
Yeah, it's done.
Oh, okay, I thought there was something wrong with the date.
Okay, so. She's gonna retire.
We're talking about L, right?
Yeah.
For an L, okay.
So per contract, they could retire as soon as that they're technically eligible. She's still waiting for some dates from State Ed, so State Ed needs to give her some credit. She doesn't know if she'll have that credit. So if she can retire on June thirtieth, she would. She may be backed up all the way into December. So I don't wanna say that she's retiring on June thirtieth, or she's in actuality going to possibly be with us December. She gave us the letter of intent, which is the important part.
Right.
And we can vouch for that, but I'd like to, I don't wanna lock in a date that could be wrong.
Can't we do effectively a date to be determined?
No, just hold it until we know.
Table is, okay.
Right, but I just wanted to know that.
So she cares, we're the time. She has the time, she's waiting for State Ed?
Yeah.
To figure out exactly what is their, their fit reevaluated.
Per their contract, in order to get their, their retirement bonus, they need to notify us by February first.
Okay.
She provided that letter.
She's good.
And usually, you just do it, so the deal is if she could retire on June thirtieth, she will. If the date gets pushed back by the state to December, because she still hasn't met with State Ed or, or New York State Teachers Retirement, she needs to go to that date, and that's when she's first fully eligible. So that's, that's where she is, so I need to vote on a date, and then all of a sudden say, too bad, so sad, you're.
I need a motion to table up. John, James? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, most to accept the letter of resignation from Lynn Nickens, R N, effective March first, twenty twenty-two. Amanda? The boys are just lazy with their hands today.
So, James? So Lynn is affected, she also wants to be a substitute for us. We'll make sure that that ends up on, the, the other thing is if we don't find the nurse by March first, we're likely gonna extend that if.
Does it have to be an R N?
It has to be an R N.
It has to be an R N.
Has to be an R N. If we had an R N in the district and we had a second nurse, it could be an O P M. We most have one R N in the district.
Have we had anybody?
We did have one, and Lady thought of it over the weekend, and she decided to stay where she was.
We've had a problem with this since the beginning of the year. Is there anyone giving you feedback as to why there's not thirty people banging on the door of the physician?
Salute.
Nurses are few and far between.
But it's also salary.
Yeah, I know, but there's.
So your question is, that's something we need to discuss.
All right, so, thank you for your service, Miss.
Yes, thank you.
Now, just, just, you know, we might extend her beyond that date and give you a new date that we, we adjust it for the next board meeting. Because Lynn doesn't wanna leave us hanging, and.
Thank you.
I, that's very generous.
And I wanna make sure we're. And I want to make sure we're protecting her by extending the date and not calling her a substitute for her own job or something.
So it wouldn't be where we want the date, like, you want to go with the state?
That's the date we're, we're sure you're for. If we get the budget. But if we don't, and Lynn's gracious enough to stick around, we're going to ask you to amend it at the next meeting.
How complicated.
For more, you should be like shopping.
What are you writing?
All in favor? All good, James?
Yeah.
Sorry.
All right. All right. All appointments subject to change in compensation proration pending emergency school closing required reduction to enforce all coaching appointments made pending completion and verification of all required coaching credentials with stipend per FETA contract commiserate with experience and no other salary benefits. All coaching or curriculum appointments are subject to reduction, compensation proration pending the final student enrollment numbers, pending the outcome of any potential mergers and emergency school closings. With that said, do we need a majority of those present or a majority of the board to vote on this?
Because we've only got.
And they're not allowed legally.
We need a majority of those present. Probably we can do it.
So if we, if we, first of all, you guys can vote on it. That's, that's the first.
Legally, I can.
Legal, you can.
Legally, you can.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you might not.
But, but here's the biggest piece. Regardless of anything else, you need a quorum of the board to pass anything.
We have a quorum of the board. We got a majority.
But on anything that we pass, if one of you guys abstain or one of you guys voted no, it doesn't go through.
Because it's a, right, because it's a five-person vote.
A five-person vote on a nine-person board.
So can we just table? Can we table that?
If we can legally vote, I will vote.
You can legally vote. I went through this with, with Kirwin and Phyllis.
Right, we know that. Just without precautions, we're personally back to you.
So the deal is, sometimes people think it's happy. And we prefer.
Right, I don't want anybody, yeah, we don't want anybody to think that we're, you know.
It's up to you guys. You table it or if you're comfortable.
Doesn't, can it wait till the next meeting to be voted on for those appointments?
The next meeting, just understand what sports are. We're going to start on the first and you can vote, retro-vote it.
Right.
And which that's what you're more comfortable with.
It's up to you guys.
Which is probably easier.
You feel better about that, or?
Just make sure you start anyway.
Yeah. I mean, it's not a matter of.
I, I don't mind voting tonight. If it's legal for us to vote, I will vote. And in the discussion part, I will say, I don't normally vote on things that are related to family. However, when you only have five members showing up for the board meeting, then sometimes you have to do things to move things along.
So like you have that little district with the three-member board?
I'm sorry, yes, correct.
Imagine being there.
Correct. As long as it's legal, I, I won't care.
So with that said.
Personally back to you.
No, yeah.
Yeah.
Probably just going.
I'm sorry. I won't, no, correct, yes. So jumpy.
All right. Motion to appoint Jeffy Durkey as Boys varsity baseball coach for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three school year, at a rate of pay per the FETA contract. John?
I say you go for the bundle.
No.
Need a second motion. James? Any discussion?
The discussion that I would like to just make a statement of is that I don't typically vote on, and Christina and I want to speak for you, but we don't typically. We don't typically vote on anything that is related to family. However, it is legal for us to do so. And because we only have five members of the board here, we will vote so that things can move forward.
There you go.
Thank you.
Yes.
All in favor? Motion to appoint Jeffrey Tully as Boys JV baseball coach for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three school year, at a rate of pay per the FETA contract. Christina? Amanda? Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Mr. Durkey, and Mr. Tully. Motion to appoint Paige Toomey as Girls Modified Softball Coach for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year, at a rate of pay per the FETA contract. Christina? John? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thank you, Paige. Motion to approve the following athletic merger for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year as follows. Football, eleven-man with Corinne Central School District and Habby Luzern Central School District for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three season. John?